So it's the order of February, I'm sorry, the March thirtieth meeting of the Platinum Roads Panel in Wood Creek, Texas. Secretary, would you call a roll please?
Chairperson Cody Abney.
President.
Vice Chair Ed Fleming.
Here.
Panelist Jill Glenn.
Here.
Panelist Jack Bowden.
Here.
Panelist Roger Shol.
Here.
And all panelists, Joe Carter and all panelists, Laura Lebrun, Joseph Johnson.
Okay, we've already established this forum. Are there any public comments?
No.
First item on the consent calendar is approval of a regular meeting minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, which are attached to this package.
Mayor Promoting Reif.
Moved and seconded, Secretary. There's no discussion, we can have a vote on that.
Vice Chair Ed Fleming.
Yes, I'm here, yes, I vote for her.
Panelist Jill Glenn.
Yes.
Panelist Jack Bowden.
Yeah.
Panelist Roger Shol.
Yeah.
And Chair Cody Abney.
Yes. Now, receiving reports from officers and council liaisons. Councilperson Bailey, do you have a report for us today?
I just want to mention a couple of things that might be of interest to the panel ongoing. Uh, that were discussed in City Council. Um, the survey, you know, the citizen survey, has everyone seen it?
Mm-hmm.
I thought the comments regarding uh this traffic measures to slow down traffic were were interesting. But there were also a lot of comments about certain areas where people suggested stop signs or something to mitigate traffic and make um and protect pedestrians better. There's also a prior resolution to put a stop sign at the intersection of Augusta and Brook Hall. I've looked at that a lot and it's rather awkward placement, but also to put those stop signs there for the benefit of pedestrians, there there is no the only way pedestrians can walk through there is to walk in the middle of the street. So even if the city puts stop signs, you're still, you're creating a hazardous position. There may be a way to trim back the bushes to actually make a little bit of a corner, maybe even crosswalk. But because it has to do with that road and some stop signs, in the future, it may be something that the road panel wants to consider.
I walk it every day with my dog. And I see no problem whatsoever. I don't understand, a lot of people commented about it, that only you have a podcast, but it's true, yeah. Uh, I'm certified, I was flabbergasted when this thing came up a year ago, but I walk that, I introduce that every day to my dog. And so I had my age, couldn't survive with a dog, you know? That's all I see since I'm on that, I'm on video, I forget that girl.
Were there any other enjoy, I haven't seen the results of that survey, but I assume that's on the city website?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be released after council approves it on that.
Oh, okay, were there any other items that you could summarize for us that would be of interest?
Um, what I've printed out here, there there are a lot of things that under category should Wood Creek incorporate traffic calming measures, uh especially the part of the road projects. These measures could include street plants, heat cushions, tables, acceptable first responders, raised dog carts, et cetera. Um, I'm not sure what street plantings would do to calm traffic. There were some questions I had about this question, right, as it was presented. Um, but there's quite a lot of strong opinions about traffic pushing. And quite a few opinions about where there might be some uh traffic stop sign. So I think it will be of interest to the to the panel to read through that, the comments on that section. Uh, as far as should we do something, it was pretty solid, yes, we should do something.
Okay, do you have anything else to report?
No, I don't.
City manager, when we spoke last night, asked me to read his memorandum into the record, so we need to have a city manager rule could not be here this evening. He has uh made out a memorandum that he wants read into the record here, so I'll read it aloud. It's to the Platinum Roads Committee from City Manager Kevin Rule, dated today. That's the city manager's report for the Platinum Roads Committee. The city received no sealed bids by the deadline for the residential chip seal project. One company was late with their bid and the bid was returned unopened to the bidder per the RFP. After consulting with K Breeze, Mayor Jeff Rasko and Chair Cody Abney and I directed K Breeze to begin combining the small residential chip seal project with the bigger road bond, or yeah, road bond project. This new road project will be both cash funded and bond funded in their respective amounts. If the Platinum Roads Committee determines this is a direction it wishes to pursue, the process has already begun. If not, city staff can make arrangements to reissue the residential chip seal project. A tentative timeline has been established with K Breeze. If the committee decides to combine the two projects for a twenty twenty-three Wood Creek Road project. The first date is May nineteenth of this year, K Breeze will deliver RFP bid package to Platinum Road Committee for review. June first, twenty twenty-three, Platinum Roads Committee Special Meeting recommending approval of RFP to the City Council. June fourteenth of this year, City Council approves recommended twenty twenty-three Wood Creek Road project. On June fifteenth, following day, the RFP will be issued. June twenty-eighth, it will be a pre-bid meeting. July fourteenth, the sealed bid is due. July twenty-seventh, the Platinum Roads Committee Special Meeting recommending approval of selected bidder to the City Council will happen. August ninth, City Council approves contractor for the twenty twenty-three Wood Creek Road project. October thirty-first, project completed by the end of October in the spectacular, which is the target that we set in this panel. I look forward to hearing about your meeting and the decisions you made when I am back in the office on Monday. Thank you, Kevin Rule, City Manager, City of Wood Creek. Any discussion on that report?
I guess you gotta look at these dates from a credibility standpoint, so.
We did, uh, I pushed back hard on the uh RFP delivery by May nineteenth from K Breeze. I believe Kevin Rule is also pushing at K Breeze that that is, that is unnecessary, nothing shouldn't take that long.
Shouldn't be any later than that.
I, no, certainly shouldn't be any later than that. I, I don't know, I really, I don't understand why that takes that long.
Well, plus it's money, the longer it goes, the more it's gonna cost.
Yeah, I just don't, uh, then Kevin, the city manager doesn't like it any more than I do.
They won't at all, maybe not long, not next year, you know, it's fun.
Uh, that's a typo.
Okay.
Definitely. I kept saying, oh, this year, and I wasn't reading the year, and yeah, I hit the five oh and that. Anyway, we talked about it last night, we were still, uh, we were so hard more about getting this done before the spectacular.
Yeah, okay, this year.
Yes, that year, too. But I I still have a problem with May nineteen for a revised RFP, which is literally changing a few sentences with Microsoft Word. I mean, why does it take that long?
You hearing that from Ron, or you hearing that from somebody higher?
I heard it from Kevin, I don't know who who Kevin's talking to at K Breeze, but they.
Because a lot of this is dependent on the temperature, right, of
It is.
It's gonna get hot.
With with this timeline, we'll we'll be doing it in prime time.
Yeah.
It'll be a good time.
Yeah.
But it delayed a month.
That's true.
And you took them five months, you get the RFP for just our little roads, so I hope Kevin said he will push, and I guess he will do.
Yeah, but we can move this timeline out, we'll address that in a subsequent meeting, but I just don't know why it's taking so long. It's not like, it's not like we're not paying them.
And they're letting them contract to us for a certain period of time.
I can't answer that question.
By most engineering companies.
Uh, they're, they are part of one of the motions that former Mayor Chris Lebrun made the suggestion to have all of our contracts reviewed, so they're, they will be reviewed at some point.
Some set commission. Good. If there's not further discussion, we can hear a report from the city secretary.
Uh, you already asked the question, I was just gonna let y'all know that the survey results would be reviewed and accepted by Council, uh, April twelfth. And uh, then we'd be able to give you all the audio information that you wanted.
Okay, great, any discussion on that? There's no special orders, no unfinished business, for general orders, so move on to new business, and we can begin a workshop to discuss the results of the chip seal bid package response. Anybody want to open that discussion? Jack Bowden?
No. It's pretty clear, I mean, where it didn't.
I think we've kind of, we haven't done it with this panel right here, but the consensus of opinion so far seems to be that we do roll the residential chip seal package into the bond package. And there's been some discussion also that we need to just, we just need to mill and repay everything, all of them, every street in town. We need to have this mill where necessary, repair subsurface and just repay everything, just like we did Wood Creek Drive. If we use Wood Creek Drive as a metric, we got, we we bought one mile of mill repair replaced for roughly four hundred thousand dollars, but we've got eight miles of road left to do. With the amount of money that we have in the bond package with city funds, we should be able to pay eight and a half miles. In theory, there might be money left over.
But chip seal.
I like.
That's that's the idea, but.
A council member mentioned to me, and it's an interesting comment. Do we pave a street where we know we have a drainage issue? Like uh, like maybe we'd have to just say, we'll remove that street until the drainage issue is 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 a brought up fix. I I've thought about that comment, um. I don't know how long it's gonna ever take. Somebody to come up and say what what the drainage issue is and how to repair. As an example, I know one on Palmer, was it Palmer, what's it, Jack Palmer? On the right side where the water comes down, anywhere around the side of the street, so. But but if we procrastinate on this stuff, we won't get anything done. And I think we're all just go ahead and pave the entire drainage city, provided we have enough funds to pave it. Then come back and 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 tackle those individual items as required.
I agree, I do.
If we try to block streets, they will fix them later, we'll get all, let's just go ahead, one 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 car, one cent, one council member will bring that up as an issue, so just be prepared. I don't know how far it is, but I might be able to, never mind, I'll see, I'll see you say anything, but anyway. But but it's an interesting comment.
I'm, okay, I'm still a little, this memorandum, he's suggesting putting the chip seal project with the bigger bond role, but you're, we're saying no, we do everything happen.
If we roll everything together, using the metrics we have right now, we we should, we should be able to do away with chip seal and everyone get the same quality of street throughout the entire city.
So he would go back to uh Breeze and say, this is what the RFP should look like, not like this.
Yeah, correct, well, we'll see, Breeze is working on the bond issued paving RFP right now.
Right.
So they're gonna amend that in mid-street and include all of the streets into it.
Sure.
On the way.
I do want to make a comment, um, we, the only asphalt overlay street we've ever done was Wood Creek. Because we are limited in funds. I had a, I'm concerned that we're very optimistic, we can do it, but what happens if we can't do it all in asphalt overlay? I had about a twenty, thirty minute conversation with Aaron Jones yesterday. We're on the scholarship committee, and he said, um, market conditions are different right now, he's having a very hard time keeping crews. Uh, got thirty-two guys in the field, he's short twenty-four. Um, they let him bid, they had to rebid some jobs. Uh, they they had allocations for a million five, their engineering costs are down a million five. The best bid came in at four million. So we can't, we also need to prepare for conditions worsening with higher prices of asphalt, shortage of labor, um, things like that, because I hope there's a contingency in case our bond money doesn't cover. Um, I don't want to see us go back to where we were, the primary streets get paved, the small streets are not.
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna go down a path where we don't, we don't recondition all of the streets in one way or another.
I agree.
As our stated goal, basically, we're opening every street in town.
And it did kind of state that, um, if that scenario happened, that there would be cash funds found. So that, but I just want to bring it up that, um, you know, we don't know what the market is, we've never had
No.
this optimistic an outlook, but we've never had a bond money either.
The only way I can s- I can think of, or I can see to gauge it, what we can do is to put it on the street and get bids back. That's right, I don't know what else to do, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm optimistic that we'll put it out there and these big boys will come in here, swoop in, like, I mean, like Alba that did Wood Creek Drive. They'll flood this place with people that they have and all of the equipment that they own, and they'll knock it out extremely fast and they'll walk out of here with a big fat profit.
I agree, and that's that's always been our approach, even with the chip seal, let's put it out there, see what the cost is, and we'll decide what was, when we get a problem, then we'll work on the problems.
Yeah.
We all know until we get the bid.
What we kind of think is that we put that that RFP out for the chip seal and it just wasn't big enough for anybody to buy on it.
Well, there, I called, I I stopped at five because I was getting the same answer. These guys are suddenly really busy, again, the guys that are, have got their proofs, they're gonna pick some jobs. But I, a lot of them said, send a, send the scope and I'll have you bid in two hours. They're not accustomed to bidding under fifty-six page projects. I did get a bid back just to me, so it's meaningless, but from Apex at a hundred ninety-five thousand. That particular bidder helped me again today, and they wanted to know what we're doing, if we're gonna, we consider just going with the chip seal, and I said, it looks like we're going to do an overall package. And they said, well, if you split it into partial asphalt, parts chip seal, we're still interested. So mostly, um, I also got one comment, the guy said, well, and this might have been, in my enthusiasm, not to have no bids. I looked at every chip seal producer in central Texas. One guy said, well, five of my buddies already got that package and they're gonna bid it, so I didn't bother. So, uh, there are a few reasons, but.
And yet no one's ever gonna bid.
No, probably.
I still think the best course is to pave all of them, you know, and be done with it, they're all, they all need help, they're all taxpayers. And I think we we could really be in bad political shape morally or whatever, do yours or not do yours. If you get chip sealed, you get a road that'll last twenty-five years and you're, you know, back up to each other. That's a little bit uncomfortable, and then seeing what happened on the bid, but I think we can get a lot better deals lumping it all in there, and we may get a better deal with engineering companies, too, if they can't get it up quicker, I just don't understand.
I don't understand engineering companies.
I really don't.
I get you to say my opinion on the thing, if we're using public funds, we're spending everybody's money to do this, not only my money, y'all's money, everybody else's money. One of the things that I believe in, and I've, I've been taught since I was a child, and I had it beaten into my head as an adult through terrible experience, is always buy the best thing you can afford, always, 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 because you buy once and you cry once. I learned that lesson the hard way, over and over and over, and if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it right. I don't know how y'all feel about that, but that's how I feel.
It's not good to me if we can afford it.
Exactly, if we can afford it.
And it's something you get done faster, like, done, you know, but it's like, we did this, and then everybody's waiting with my turn, and you know.
I totally agree with you, but the the only thing that bothers me is the thing that we kind of brushed on a while ago, that that she said one of the bidders, these bidders are not used to these hundred fifty-six page bids, I don't know what to do about it.
The people that can do, that can do a three and a half million dollar job, they are.
Yeah, the big ones, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of these are, are, when you go out a chip seal project with a hundred fifty-six pages, that probably.
I, I need to tell you one of the things that I dreaded is if we, if we went with a, uh, someone that was less capable, a company that was less capable, that this turns into a two-month ordeal in the city, and then everyone has paving fatigue about halfway through it, and it just turns it just turns, it is unpleasant for everyone, particularly everyone in the city government.
Yeah.
I I think it would be advantageous to get a big boy in here that has, that owns twenty-five dump trucks and three milling machines, it has a hundred employees, and just do it.
Another comment from Aaron Jones, um, may help, may not, um, he said something, big contractors have now bought the asphalt processing plants. So when they go in for a bid, they can adjust the price of their asphalt such that they can eliminate water competition.
Right.
So that's good until they start, well, unless they start having monopoly and they can bid whatever they want to. So we've got some uh large scale changes in the marketplace, so we'll just have to wait and see what happens. Also, as far as, okay, my little favorite charts, right here, twenty thirteen, we said no more chip seal because there was chip issues, and then we went ten years with no roads. So I just want to make sure we, I wanted to see trucks smell asphalt this month. I think it's great that you did all that work, and now we're gonna have so many, we're gonna see exactly all our offloads. Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it. We can't see your parked car, I think the way to get the car moving is to get the whole RFP out there and then get pricing back from qualified bidders that know what to do, know the process, and they have the horsepower to make it happen, and we see what that real number is. And either we get Dicker Shop right across the face, or they come back and say, we'll do it for two and a half, something like that.
Yeah. Or go back to John Ward and maybe check out the chip seal and see.
Then we do, then we do break it out, but we break out a large number of streets for chip seal, but all the sacks and all that. We'll try that again, I think that should be plan B.
Working with the.
Or plan C.
Working one with one contract.
That's a possibility, there could be language in RFP within, I'm not sure, I think Kevin and I had that conversation, that there would be language in the RFP for some, some scope of chip seal as an add alternate in a bid. Like, we can do everything asphalt for this, or we can break it up like this with all major streets in asphalt and minor streets in chip seal. Or the RFP, I'm not certain, because I haven't seen it, but I think that's what K Breeze is bidding, is building into. And it means the bidder gives you two different types of bids.
Yeah, according to the tip, that's not, but so here you're saying they're gonna do chip seal in his memorandum, I don't know if that's what he told our.
I I I think the memorandum is
Is probably just.
It's not complete.
It's okay, good.
It's just a summary of his report today, and he's wanting us to get everything rolled into a package so he can do it as part of council.
Well, that would certainly be the way to do it, if we could, we could get one big guy and and.
The 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 big boys will come after a three million dollar overhaul. They will.
And be able to stage it all properly, too, if you have one big one.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna have to work something. They're gonna smell blood in the water, but just if they, the faster they come in here and do it, the faster they knock it out. You know, their their labor window is shrunk, the fatter the profit, they walk out with it. So those big boys with the horsepower can do things like that.
Well, the way they did Wood Creek was impressive, it was two days.
Or something like that.
I remember saying, I don't know about this deal, that was super.
It was, I've never seen a contractor do something like that in work, that's crazy. Well, what do y'all think, when we go into regular agenda, which the next is gonna be to discuss and take possible action with K Breeze? What do y'all think, how are we, how are we gonna lead him?
I think, in my opinion, just just do them all, do them all, and tell them to do the RFP for all of the streets, pay them all, period.
Why don't you make a motion?
We actually, we need to move, we have to move on to the next.
Oh, that's right.
With a provision that in the RFP that we may have made with the, with that we can split it if we have to, or some words to say what we were talking about.
I'm not sure it's not, I don't, I hate to misspeak because I don't know for certain, but I think it's already been built in there.
Well, if it's not.
Maybe we talked about it in our last meeting, didn't we?
No. So y'all talked, you would have talked about it probably as a bid, hopefully, but we didn't talk about the meeting.
When would, when would we be able to see a preliminary RFP?
Stomper regarding, may not take.
No, 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 we gotta see.
If this, well, according to Kevin, it's not even gonna be available or something.
Yeah, let's see if Kevin.
I called BS on that, I saw it.
Well, we gotta, we gotta see that.
What do you think, have a two hundred?
Well, he he said this is the improved date, he said, they told him something like eight, ten weeks or something, and he said, no, no, no.
I'd like to see their thought process, what are they gonna put in there? I don't, I don't have so much interest in the language, I want to understand just what they all are trying to put in there, what's at ball club? What is it, now I'll be able, they'll be able to tell us today, here's what we're planning to put in the RFP. That would be the time for us to say, woo, you're going in the wrong direction. And we could start on May nineteenth, say, hey, my God, this is too late, it's too late, we got a stanchion in our hands. A workshop, just have someone in our hands, say, hey, y'all, yeah, this looks good, look.
So look, it looks to me like it. The city should be able to give us the RFP that they get on May nineteenth, on or about May nineteenth for our review. If we see a problem with that, without creating a walking forum, we'll be able to communicate that to our council liaison or to the city manager, if there's a huge problem, and then I think the heat would be on K Breeze to fix it before our meeting on June first. What is it, I mean, that's that's eleven or twelve days, isn't it?
Yeah, well, just like Roger said here, are they gonna have some kind of another option in there that we can proceed? They may or may not, I don't know if they're gonna put in this.
Why can't we meet with K Breeze before then, then just before we land?
That's, because we can, we can, we can schedule a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to do just a quick history on what we have, what happened with K Breeze when I was chair of committee. Um, let me remind you, July, we had our concept of chip seal roads, they came back with a proposal, completely different type of roads. And it's like, no, those aren't necessarily chip seal roads, go back to what we had. Then they thought that, we came up with another one. We had a proposal in August, it took us until January to get something in front of the council. Um, what I saw happen with it, and I just don't, we'll make this short, um, they'll give us something, and then, nope, that's not. Um, they'll give us something and then, nope, that's not quite right. One month later, we get one line changed and often they didn't even make all the corrections.
I, I think we ought to meet with them in the next two weeks, have them come to Jesus meeting with them. And sit, and sit down and say, okay, and here, here's what we want, here's what we want the city into this thing.
Absolutely, awesome.
We can, uh, will we move on to the next agenda? Motion can be made, I believe.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
If we wanna, if we wanna get into workshop discussion, move into the regular agenda, the next agenda, I'm gonna leave businesses, I'll skip and take possible action to request Kate Fries to revise the bond bid package to include the streets listed in the chip sealed bid package. I would say that your suggestion ought to be rolled into the, a motion, if a motion's gonna be made.
You wanna make it, you, you expressed it so well, I'll make that motion. Mr. Boz's terminology is wonderfully correct. And I think we ought to put that language in there somehow too, if we expect some prompt, no dogging service out of them. And to make this happen, give us an RFP that includes the language we want pronto.
The part, the portion of the motion needs to be that we roll the residential chip seal package into the road bond package.
Thank you.
So, one of you guys needs, needs to make that motion.
I will do that because that might infer that we want the nine streets chip sealed. We, we gotta be careful about how we language this thing.
That's just an alternative, we want their bid to be on paving them all, right?
Yeah.
I really think.
So you can make the motion and then put it at the end of it, and we want all, every street in town to be paved.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah, next, what are you gonna?
Pay them all or chip seal them all, I think.
Oh, I saw what you're saying, yeah. Pay, which implies both that business.
Yeah.
Roger, would you, uh, make a motion, sir?
Well, let's see it, okay. Did I make mine, uh, improperly?
Well, we're trying to, trying to roll about three things, that's a motion that's in compliance with the agenda item, that's a motion. So, I mean, can, I can make a motion, can I? Okay, I'll move that we request city council direct Kate Fries to roll the streets named in the residential chip seal package into the upcoming road bond package RFP. And structure that RFP to request that bidders provide a price for hot mix paving of all streets in the city. And we're gonna schedule a special meeting in the next two weeks with Kate Fries.
Yes.
But that's not part of the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Was it Roger, or? I'm sorry, did you say?
Jack.
And then the meeting with Kate Fries is just a, not a motion needed on that, but it's just a.
Well, we'll schedule that with city manager and, uh, the city secretary, and then we will question them. They need to show up and show up with the guts they have. Because if they're going down the wrong path, we want to steer them back in a direction that we like before they deliver that package on May nineteenth. And then, well, we can also ask them exactly why it takes until May nineteenth. And if there's no brother, oh, we have to take a roll call vote, okay? Grab on that.
Dallas Jolwin?
Here. I think we did, her eye.
It's a roll call vote. Roll the motion.
Yeah. Dallas Jack Booth?
Yes.
Dallas Rice and Hope?
Yeah.
There, who are you at me?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Ethan?
Yeah.
We've all had a meeting since then, we've waited.
Yeah, we're gonna look for a meeting before the nineteenth, and we wanna do that, I don't know who the days that is, but I'm not really vague, we all, I care around names. How many weeks in twenty two?
We're on a strategy meeting with these people, we're done next year with the.
Mm-hmm.
It was the thirteen.
So we've got thirty days, thirty, there's thirty-one there. Forty, we're at three weeks into May for that, and nothing takes that long.
No.
They're moving at this speed and it'll last.
I feel like they probably don't make paper products, guys.
Of course they do.
Fix your dollar.
I just think there's.
Do we meet them on April thirtieth?
I don't see why not. May, June.
That'll be three days.
April. There's ten, okay, this week's done. Another week. Uh, what is it, not today, it's Thursday? What about April thirteenth, that'll be two weeks.
We're not there, we're not out there. Oh, and we, yeah, we'll be back. And yeah, we're ready. Yeah. Yeah, we'll be back.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be back. The thirties are.
You sure?
Bro, yeah.
Okay, we'll talk to the city manager about meeting on, a special meeting on the thirteenth, and we want Kate Fries here with their RFP. It'll be nice if we could have, it'd be nice if we could take a look at that RFP before they got here. I don't know that they will share it with us, with it being unfinished, but I don't see any harm in, uh, holding your feet to the fire. Let's see what you got so far, where's your, yeah.
And who would be attending from Kate Fries, that might be something.
Who's the principal they always send over here?
Uh, Brian. But he doesn't, he always deflects back on, he didn't write that contract. Somehow we need to make the, the policy, the, the person that wrote the RFP, they need to be here, or he's the one that approved it.
Right, ownership, it's a good possibility the person writing the RFP is a twenty-four-year-old engineer training, yeah, background.
See, like, your meeting.
But we paid for the profession.
Yeah, my thirty-something, me. Hey, you know, if, if Ron, if Ron just represented that Kate Fries cho- chooses to send, then Ryan needs to come with their word today. And he needs to deliver the message back to them, I would assume. I mean, I don't know that it really gets you to dictate who they send. I wouldn't be very angry if I was Kate Fries. I don't know.
I've just heard so many, I don't know answers.
Yeah, it's scary. Sure, what does that even mean? Right.
I have, I have a feeling that, uh, Jack is willing to talk to the city manager, and the city manager is wanting to make it real clear to Kate Fries, let's expect it up in the neck of your.
That's true, we didn't have it before.
I'm not sure that's going to happen, I, I was guessing, I would say that's the one, Kevin.
No, I do.
He wouldn't do it.
Well, I don't have any announcements, and if nobody has any further discussion, I'm not showing discussion, anybody wants to discuss anything, let's do it now.
I just have one minor thing, a while back I brought up having a cross traffic doesn't stop on Doolittle and Jagger Miller. And it was gonna go before council, but I didn't hear anything.
Um, no.
Right, right before you get people cross over to, um, Camp Yan Judea, there's a stop sign, but the cross street, um, I believe that's Doolittle. Um, they don't stop. And so people going to the camp don't realize that, and so they just wanna roll on in and we're gonna have a cross traffic does not stop, put on the stop sign.
Okay. Well, let me get that up next.
That, that'd be, that's one of the signs, that's correct, Taylor's sign, this thing, and it counts on same pole, underneath the stop sign, that cross traffic does not stop.
And I think it was brought up before, but I didn't hear. Okay, let's, I'll speak to her, maybe they will get away from the, the one on Brook Hall. And if you get the big white stuff, whatever. A very quick screen. All right.
Yeah, I would like to bring up one thing, I want my favorite thing of these holes in the streets. We call them.
One in twenty years, at one fifty-five Augusta Drive, we'll be building on that.
Yeah, well, the reason I'm saying that is, is, uh, there are numbers throughout the city, if somebody hits that with a bicycle, they're gonna off bicycle. We, the city, know this, so that's, it's not so much tearing up the car, but I was thinking about that the other day when I was walking my dog down, it was kinda getting a little dark. You know, and I thought if I was on a bike, I was even blind, I would hit that bigger, so. We ought to be cautious about that.
Agreed, the, uh, the bridge on Brook Meadow, uh, on the branch road twelve side of the, the, the bridge, or, uh, the, the, uh, log cabin on Brook Meadow, this is right on the house. It just continuously falls apart in bundles and they continuously get, now it's all this series of patches, but about seven or eight bundles have opened up all of a sudden, I'm gonna come over and get some hot mix from the side of the city hall, and take it over and beat it in there with a sledgehammer, I guess. I don't have a tamper, but I can have fourteen pound sledgehammer. I guess it's a tamper, it's just falling completely apart. Anyway, I'll just pile them all up a few jacks.
Yeah. Especially though it's raining, it's a little hole.
The roads have gotten worse or something, just like all the same.
Quickly.
So, yeah.
About spray, you're still a lot of that.
Um, I know for a second, I mean, but talking about drainage, I talked to Kevin about where we stand with our, um, Brook Meadow, Brookside project, or, no, the one on Brook Hall. And it appears to be a far larger, more involved project where it's our four hundred thousand won't cover it, but he, he has experience in getting, um, funds to cover what may be a million dollar project.
The last time we talked about it, the idea was brought up, and I thought it was brilliant, just put it in an area drain in that depression and run a storm drain pipe behind those houses and daylight it in Hall Creek. I was like, ah, it's a perfect idea. I'm not so sure four hundred thousand wouldn't do that. That's very, very simple. There's no utilities that, well, there's no quality utilities behind the houses back there. And you just dig a trench, you drop some plastic pipe in there, put it in an area drain and you're done. That, that gets rid of the water, it doesn't fix the things upstream, but it gets rid of the water.
You may have, if some of them on a, uh, sewer pipe, you might have a problem there, I don't know.
Everybody's, everybody's pumped, now that's, when you live down, when you live down there, you have to have a pump up your shirt though, ultimate low point in the valley.
Moves up toward the road. Like.
Mm-hmm. I would have this, any utility being behind, anyway, even if there are underground utilities, utility contractors deal with it every single day, it doesn't matter what's in the ground, they, they can dig a ground.
The aqua sewer pipe's behind that, that's fun.
Utility contractors deal with it every day?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying to you.
Yeah.
Those are, those are who all know. I don't know whether it's still on septic still, I don't.
And there, there, I'm sure, without even checking, there has to be an easement behind those houses, you would expect there to be one. And you just, the, the city can hire a utility contractor, go in there and fix the question of where the water goes easily. And I'll bet you four hundred to get it done. I mean, if you take, take a straight ditch, there's nothing to it. The utility contractor will come in there and have that knocked out in three days.
Have you talked to the manager about that?
No, I haven't.
Because.
He just reminded me, I don't know.
And I mentioned it, what I did, I said, where is Kate Fries, you know, not my favorite, where are they on doing a new analysis? And that's when, well, they did this or that, and then it looks like a far bigger problem. But, um, I, I really think you should talk to him, uh, because you seem to have a better understanding.
It's, it's not really, the, the, where the problem gets really tricky with what's going on over there is what do you do with the water? But if you put, if you put in a twenty-four by twenty-four, uh, area drain in the ground, which is a concrete culvert box buried in the ground with a thick steel grate on it, and it daylights at Hall Creek over there, you know, a hundred yards away. The difficult part of the question is solved, then you just go upstream and you put in rock rip rap and direct the water to the area drain, that, that's not complicated. I mean, Kate Fries tried to turn it into making a swift watch. It's not, it's just moving water from point A to point B.
Seven hundred and eighty yards with it.
Is it really?
Yeah.
But it's such an easy ditch.
Oh, yeah.
The whole question is how easy to take it and install it.
Even let us do it on their side.
I mean, it's straight line. Especially if it fixes that part, portion of the cart path, where they can put their cart path back in and it's not a mud hole, you know, after the year.
Exactly.
It's just so easy.
That's a good idea.
It is, I wish I could take great, all right, or, I can't remember who gave me the idea.
Doesn't matter, we should push it though.
Yeah, I think so.
I have one question tonight, uh, there was some, uh, emails I saw flying back and forth about the status of our inter-local advisor, Mr. Jones, and some markets being able to help and advise on the whole process, is he still on board?
Yes, he is, um.
Do the whole process.
And so they just got, come off of seven days a week, you know, doing, uh, storm repair. And that, um, but no, he's still very willing, he's, he's worked with Wood Creek for many years and, uh, so he will need to launch out his blessings to help us when that point comes.
So he's all cleared to go, won't be a surprise.
Yeah, but well.
Good.
Yeah. In touch with them.
Any further discussion?
Aaron. Give me.
Uh, good. And, uh,
aren't you know that mixed up after our last meeting on this early sign? I'm checking, we'll name you David, the guy's name, it's a great, like, one, three.